It's like trying to watch water ball, as long as you're looking at it, it never stops.
There we go.
All rise. Board of Public County is now in session. Darwin Clark, please.
Chief of Justice, Mr. Parker, please.
Everybody bow, would you please? Heavenly Father, we want to thank you for another day you've given us, Lord Father. We ask you as we stand and represent your people, Lord Father, that you will surrender our will to yours, Lord Father, and you'll guide us in the direction that we need to go. We just ask you to bless this day, bless our ventures. We look back to this, and we have this with us.
I pledge allegiance to the fight of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, we call her over.
Randall Boswell?
Here.
Roger Carr?
Here.
Jesse Bowman?
Here.
Geraldine Walker?
Here.
Philip Tally?
Here.
Lee Richards?
Yes.
Patrick McCurdy?
Here.
Jeff Long?
Here.
Bobby Melton?
Here.
Shane Walker?
Here.
Donna Savage?
Here.
Cindy Robbins?
Here.
Gil McAllan?
Here.
Darwin Clark?
Yes.
Greg Nibbins?
Here.
All present. Uh, number five, approved amendment from January 2023, county commission meeting. That motion is not set. Take it by Cindy Robbins. Call four?
What is meant, darling?
What, oh.
The day goes on since twenty twenty-three, it should be twenty twenty-four.
Would make a change.
Yeah. Everybody talk about that, I didn't catch it off. All right, will that change instead of having a motion by Donovan and the second, I think. Discussion. All four?
Ah.
All four, motion carried. Number six, consider approval for open bids for the sheriff's department, bullet resistance counters and safety at my statistics, and then bullet proof, uh, bid for twenty-eight thousand three thirty, and it's for three. Uh, we got corporate, and I think it's for the clerk, cert court clerk, and the character clerk.
It is, it will be at their business windows. Uh, it, it'll be a safety counter that probably should have been installed years ago, uh, here for the clerk to master, and at the cert court clerk's office where they do their business out front.
Yeah, if you have questions, hurry up. Got a motion by Geraldine, I'll take it by Jesse. Clerk, we call her over.
Greg Nibbins?
Yes.
Darwin Clark?
Yes.
Gil McAllan?
Yes.
Cindy Robbins?
Yes.
Donna Savage?
Yes.
Shane Walker?
Yes.
Bobby Melton?
Yes.
Jeff Long?
Yes.
Patrick McCurdy?
Yes.
Lee Richards?
Yes.
Philip Tally?
Yes.
Geraldine Walker?
Yes.
Jesse Bowman?
Yes.
Roger Carr?
Yes.
Randall Boswell?
Yes.
All four, motion carried. Number seven, consider approval for budget amendments, General Fund one-on-one, amendment number five, Solid Waste Fund one-one-six, amendment number one, and General Fund one-on-one, amendment number six, for county clerks who pay their employee salary supplements at, at of the reserve read on top of it. And I think county attorney had a substitution decided.
I know that this has gone through the committee. Who, who is on this committee? Okay, and, and it passed, it says to also be approved by the Comptroller's Office. And the Comptroller's Office advises us that the Tennessee Attorney General has this under advisement because questions have come in across the state about this. And so when the attorney, when they issue that opinion, then we'll, we'll, we'll be able to come forward with a resolution in the Saturday. Does anybody have any questions?
So what are you, are you saying now we need to pass on this vote, or do we need to vote?
No, you don't need to vote.
Okay, so we need to pass on that?
Because I know the pair of resolutions, and they should have Attorney General's opinion, they can fair enough.
Move to next county.
Yes, please. Thank you.
All right. Any questions?
We need to make an amendment to remove the General Fund one-on-one amendment number six.
We're not going to remove it, we're just going to move it to the next.
Move that one.
Yeah, move it to the next month. She says she has to prepare a resolution and do it, she's not done. We can't.
Be better off table till next month.
Excuse me?
Be better off the table until next month.
I don't know, we need to table it.
I can't.
I understand what you mean. How do you want the paperwork to progress there?
I just want the other two amendments.
Yeah, we'll get those, yeah. So, we'll have two.
We'll go on to next one.
Two votes, yeah, we'll go to next one. The first vote will be for General Fund one-on-one amendment number five, and Solid Waste Fund one-one-six, amendment number one. So, clerk, call her over, we'll have two, please.
Okay, let's see here. Randall Boswell?
Yes.
Roger Carr?
Yes.
Jesse Bowman?
Here.
Geraldine Walker?
Um, do we not have to have a motion before we vote?
No, no, we still, well, yeah, we probably do. It's like they're out of, we got, sorry about that, thanks, Geraldine. Yeah, Cindy made a motion to approve number five and number one.
Second.
And a second by, by Randall. Now we'll call, uh, for a roll call.
Cindy motion to approve?
Approve, yes, my okay. Thank you all.
Go first and second.
First is Cindy Robbins.
Okay.
And then the second is Randall Ball.
That's for five and one.
Pardon?
For five and one.
Yeah.
Six to.
Amendment one-on-one, and what, six, okay. All right, call her over, please.
Randall Boswell?
Yes.
Roger Carr?
Yes.
Jesse Bowman?
Yes.
Geraldine Walker?
Yes.
Philip Tally?
Yes.
Lee Richards?
Yes.
Patrick McCurdy?
Yes.
Jeff Long?
Yes.
Bobby Melton?
Yes.
Shane Walker?
Yes.
Donna Savage?
Yes.
Cindy Robbins?
Yes.
Gil McAllan?
Yes.
Darwin Clark?
Yes.
Greg Nibbins?
Yes.
All four. Now I need a motion to move General Fund one-on-one amendment number six, for county clerks to pay area employees supplemental pay, baseball, regular baseball, county baseball, draw. Draw. Got a motion by Philip Tally? Got a second by Jeff Long? Any discussion? Call her over now, please. To move to next one.
Randall Boswell?
Yes.
Roger Carr?
Yes.
Jesse Bowman?
Yes.
Geraldine Walker?
Yes.
Philip Tally?
Yes.
Lee Richards?
Yes.
Patrick McCurdy?
Yes.
Jeff Long?
Yes.
Bobby Melton?
Yes.
Shane Walker?
Yes.
Donna Savage?
Yes.
Cindy Robbins?
Yes.
Gil McAllan?
Yes.
Darwin Clark?
Yes.
Greg Nibbins?
That's voting to make an amendment.
Right, for next one.
Yes.
She's going to do a resolution for it, so, all four, did you vote for it?
Yeah.
Okay, keep score.
Uh, thank you.
All right, number eight, consider approval for court reports ending September and December twenty twenty-three. Uh, that will be for our court reports. Everybody just flip those. Any question? Got a motion by Randall Ball? Got a second by Philip Tally? Call her over, please.
Greg Nibbins?
Yes.
Darwin Clark?
Yes.
Gil McAllan?
Yes.
Cindy Robbins?
Yes.
Donna Savage?
Yes.
Shane Walker?
Yes.
Bobby Melton?
Yes.
Jeff Long?
Yes.
Patrick McCurdy?
Yes.
Lee Richards?
Yes.
Philip Tally?
Yes.
Geraldine Walker?
Yes.
Jesse Bowman?
Yes.
Roger Carr?
Yes.
Randall Boswell?
Yes.
All four, motion carried. Number nine, consider approval for school budget amendments, uh, general purpose fund, school fund one forty-one, amendment number four, uh, federal projects, school fund one twenty-fourth, amendment number four.
That's the end of the line. That's the school fund one forty-two.
Four, one forty-two. All right. Make that note on your agenda, it's amendment one forty-two. Any questions? It's been approved by, uh, the application committee. Got a motion by Donna Savage, I second Cindy Robbins. Please call her over.
Randall Boswell?
Yes.
Roger Carr?
Yes.
Jesse Bowman?
Yes.
Geraldine Walker?
Yes.
Philip Tally?
Yes.
Lee Richards?
Yes.
Patrick McCurdy?
Yes.
Jeff Long?
Yes.
Bobby Melton?
Yes.
Shane Walker?
Yes.
Donna Savage?
Yes.
Cindy Robbins?
Yes.
Gil McAllan?
Yes.
Darwin Clark?
Yes.
Greg Nibbins?
Yes.
All four, motion carried. Number ten, uh, consider approval for surplus library items with the letter dated December twenty-first of twenty twenty-three. Uh, consider approval for surplus property items with the letter dated January twenty-fourth of twenty twenty-four. And then consider approval for surplus county clerk items with the letter dated January twenty-sixth of twenty twenty-four. Got a motion by Jeff Long, second by Shane Walker. Any questions? Clerk, we call her over, please.
Greg Nibbins?
Yes.
Darwin Clark?
Yes.
Gil McAllan?
Yes.
Cindy Robbins?
Yes.
Donna Savage?
Yes.
Shane Walker?
Yes.
Bobby Melton?
Yes.
Jeff Long?
Yes.
Patrick McCurdy?
Yes.
Lee Richards?
Yes.
Philip Tally?
Yes.
Geraldine Walker?
Yes.
Jesse Bowman?
Yes.
Roger Carr?
Yes.
Randall Boswell?
Yes.
All four, motion carried. All right, number eleven. All right, let me see here. I don't have, uh, under number eleven. Pass it over now. No, thirteen, like, it goes from eleven to thirteen.
Uh, number twelve, they don't have the number beside of it, but it's a senior citizen grant.
That's what they, well. All right, number twelve, uh, consider approval.
What about eleven?
There is a eleven. No eleven. All right, number twelve, consider approval, uh, applying for a senior grant for up to thirty thousand dollars, no match. Achieve grant, grant notice on one twelve twenty-four, in the deadline of one sixteen, twenty twenty-four. Got a motion from Geraldine, second by Gil, I mean by Donna Savage. Any question? I hope she gets that, that'll help the commensurate with this. Uh, Victoria, call her over, please.
Randall Boswell? Yes.
Roger Carr?
Yes.
Jesse Bowman?
Yes.
Cindy Walker?
Yes.
Philip Tally?
Yes.
Lee Richards?
Yes.
Patrick McCurdy?
Yes.
Jeff Long?
Yes.
Bobby Melton?
Yes.
Shane Walker?
Yes.
Donna Savage?
Yes.
Cindy Robbins?
Yes.
Gil McAllan?
Yes.
Darwin Clark?
Yes.
Greg Nibbins?
Yes.
All four, motion carried. All right, number thirteen, consider approval for a resolution. Number twenty twenty-four dash oh two one two dash zero one, to authorize Overton County to submit an application to the Tennessee Housing Development for twenty twenty-four home grant in amount of several six thousand dollars.
Hey, Eric, uh, you all probably remember this one from last year. We applied last year, did not get funded. No one in middle Tennessee, no rural community in middle Tennessee got funded. Overton County, Picka County, you know, both of you had not had these home grants since two thousand nine, and we still, we didn't get approved last year, so, we're going to tie in this year, okay? Seven hundred fifty thousand, it's no match over in the county. It goes to help homeowner occupied, low income, disabled elderly families who are in need of home renovations, or if their house is in a dilapidated condition, we can actually replace the home. It goes for mobile homes as well. If your mobile home is in such bad shape, we can replace that as well.
And you do that as long as the money lasts, right?
That's right, as long as that seven hundred fifty thousand lasts, and, bad thing to say, it doesn't go as far as what it used to. Uh, the subsidy limit now is actually at the two hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars that we can spend on a three-bedroom, two-bedroom home. Um, you know, two years ago, you know, we were doing these for like one sixteen, you know, five years ago, I was building, you know, three-bedroom, two-ba- two, two-bedroom houses for, you know, a hundred thousand dollars, so, it shows you how kinds of changes, for sure.
You, you play for a man regarding the strip, right?
I'm making a motion.
Got a motion by Randall Ball?
Amendment, and it's the same this year as last year, it's abroad, it doesn't have to be all in the same.
That is correct. It's not like, you know, your city applications, and they're actually not doing housing the last couple of years, but that is like one targeted area. This is countywide, so, good question though, good question.
Just wanted to make that point.
Yeah.
Got a motion by Randall, second by Robbie Melton. No questions for him. Clerk, call her over, thank you, man, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Greg Nibbins?
Yes.
Darwin Clark?
Yes.
Gil McAllan?
Yes.
Cindy Robbins?
Yes.
Donna Savage?
Yes.
Shane Walker?
Yes.
Bobby Melton?
Yes.
Jeff Long?
Yes.
Patrick McCurdy?
Yes.
Lee Richards?
Yes.
Philip Tally?
Yes.
Geraldine Walker?
Yes.
Jesse Bowman?
Yes.
Roger Carr?
Yes.
Randall Boswell?
Yeah.
All four, motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you. Number fourteen, consider approval for resolution number twenty twenty-four dash zero two one two dash oh two, to authorize Overton County Commission to enter the attached legal service contract regarding insulin lawsuit, price fixing events, one other diabetic indication, we've gotten Miss Critical Casey with her, her parents, who's going to give all the overview of what this is all about. And then once she does that, then we'll have time to have you question.
Thank you for letting me be here tonight. I have not been before you. My husband, Tom Jesse, had previously been here in regard to the opioid litigation. We are your attorney for that round of litigation. It's not over, we're still trying to get you more money. Uh, just a brief update on that, the Supreme Court actually heard arguments in December about whether they're going to allow the Sackler family to opt into the bankruptcy or not. So, we're waiting on that, and everything's kind of in a st- in a standstill. However, in the course of our discovery in the opioid litigation, we sued several companies, and there was a group that we did not know existed, and most people in America, I imagine, would not, is called the pharmacy benefit managers. Well, it's a group that the distributors and the manufacturers essentially made to legally prospect drugs to sell to retailers, to, to give to doctors around the nation. And when we were going through the opioid litigation, we stumbled onto the fact that, hey, they're not just doing this with opioids, they're doing it with all sorts of drugs, specifically in this lawsuit, insulin. The problem is, we have filed a lawsuit on, in, in regard to several counties, and if you recall, I think the last time we were here, I represented, and my husband represented, fourteen of the counties in Upper East Tennessee. Well, actually, three of them were on West, but the majority in Upper East Tennessee in the opioid litigation. My contract with you is very specific that I can sue whomever I want to, as long as it's to, to bring back and rehabilitate in regard to opioids, not insulin. So, insulin does not fall under my contract for services for the county. So, I reached out to the county mayor and your county attorney, and I just said, hey, this is what we found. There's a series of manufacturers that have made a man-made depletion of assets. What this has done for my county specifically, if you, as, if you pay for your own insurance, such as your county goes through the Tennessee Common Benefit Fund, if you self-fund your health insurance for your county, the depletion of insulin has ran up your health insurance prices astronomically. Well, we've also found that they've been price fixing insulin since two thousand and three, and in the generics since two thousand and twelve. So, we have went around, and I, I've came before all my counties and said, hey, this is an opportunity that arose out of the opioid litigation. We wouldn't have known about this but for that. I would like to represent you and sue individually for Overton County in regard to, there's about twenty defendants, we believe, for Tennessee, as to the prospection, the prospecting of insulin and all generic drugs, or any other subsidiaries for insulin, such as the syringes may be an issue. Anything we can find that they prosfix, we would like to go ahead and file a lawsuit. What we will do is the group that I worked with in the opioid litigation, the other name on the contract sent to you has already filed on behalf of some of the counties in Tennessee. We have three complaints that have already been filed. We have opted into the multi-district litigation in New Jersey. So, we can bypass the state filing in Tennessee and file directly in New Jersey to get on the fast track to discovery, and that's what we'll probably do. In opioid, it was a little bit different because we were filing first, we were the first to file here rather than in every other state, so we had to file individually in Tennessee. Now we can file directly, your complaint is a Tennessee complaint, but it's filed with our work in New Jersey. With that being said, do you all have any questions?
Yeah, how did you determine Overton County would be up?
Uh, I reached out to Miss Sales, and you all do privately fund your health insurance, and you go through the Tennessee Common Benefit Fund, which a lot of counties do. Interesting enough, and I was just telling her, some counties, like, I can tell you, Claiborne County, because we just filed theirs, Claiborne County did not privately fund their health insurance. They did not go through the Tennessee Common Benefit Fund. However, Claiborne County School District did, so even if the county as a whole did not, I can go to your police department, sheriff's department, um, school district and say, hey, you have went through this, I want to sign you up, but for your county, you do privately fund through the Tennessee Common Benefit Pool. So, our damage model will be based upon the increase in the amount you're paying through the Tennessee Common Benefit Pool that has been raised since two thousand and three.
You guys will be going after the big pharma companies that are local.
Uh, no, no local, and my contract actually says that. Almost every county asks that. No, there's no one local. Uh, the twenty defendants, and I don't know if I sent a copy of the complaint so far, but it's mainly Eli Lilly and company, uh, Caremark, Express Skrips, um, United Health Group, Optimum. Optimum is the pharmacy benefit managers, so it's big national companies. Local pharmacies don't know about this. They were just doing what they were told. They didn't collude to rise, to raise the prices of it, so.
Right.
What kind of money are we talking?
It just depends. We don't know yet until we get your damages, so. I mean, we're going to ask for everything, and, I mean, just like we did in the opioid, we'll shoot for the moon, and then we come back and settle. But of course, there'll be meetings with you to discuss that before, or if that ever happens. And my contract in this is identical to the one in the opioid litigation. I front all the expenses, I take the risk. And one thing you have to remember, and I, I don't know if you all have seen that, and I don't know who was here the last time when, when we originally came, but my fourteen counties in Tennessee were the first to file in Tennessee. Then after we filed, we saw a series of other lawyers get in, the Tennessee Attorney General. The benefit for getting in with us earlier is my county's got a ten percent bump at settlement time. Because we took the risk, you all believed in us enough to take the risk with us, so we believed our counties needed more. So, at settlement time, we held out and said, no, if we're going to file first, and we're going to fight first, and we up front all these expenses, then we deserve it first. And you have to remember, when the Tennessee Attorney General got in, he wanted to settle Tennessee opioid for two hundred and fifty-some million. We held out to over five hundred, so. We're just in it to bring as much money back from rural America as we can, and I live here, so I see it every day too.
Yeah, but, what about, uh, if you get into your investigation, and you talked to the sheriff, police department, schools, and all that, and not found enough there to, to file lawsuit, what would?
No, it will be filed.
You think there is?
We, we want. Once you sign up and send me the contract, it will be filed. I mean, we may have to, depending on, you know, what pharmacies we have, or if the express scripts doesn't come to your county, this lawsuit will be filed regardless, so.
Geraldine?
So, the money comes back to the county for insurance, not specifically individuals that have overpaid for insulin?
No, uh, it comes back to the county, there's no red tape. My money that came back in opioid had no red tape restrictions on it. So, it comes back to you, and I hate to get this analogy, but if you want to spend it on lawnmowers, you can.
I don't, I don't think we're following something different on that, probably.
The state's attorney general, that money, the separate money, you have to go through, and it has to be used a percentage of it for certain things. And that was part of the pool that we got, but part of our money that the checks are sent directly to you has no red line restrictions on it, and the same will be true for this.
Against the limits.
Yes.
And you all's litigation fees, can I have the thirty-three percent, or?
Yes.
One-third of it?
Is that all thirty-three percent?
Yes, it's the one-third.
Minus the expenses.
Minus the expenses.
From top.
Yeah.
She just took any dollars, whatever, the tax card will come off that first, and then after that, she'll do thirty-three percent. I thought that would off, and then we'd get what's left.
So, it won't be a true sixty-six percent of the amount?
Right, depends on how much you spend, forget it.
Yeah, it depends on how much that we spend, but it will not be a true sixty-six percent. Now, I say that, however, in opioid, the judge ha- all federal judges have to approve fees in MDL or class actions. So, when we originally filed, my group in Tennessee, under the law, for county-state litigation, I could charge a third. We signed up the, um, trial, the Cherokee Nation. Their law is completely different, they can only do thirty percent. A lot of other states don't have a thirty percent cap. So, we started out by having this, for the fairness of all, but our clients, we bumped everybody down to thirty percent. We sent an email and said, you know, we're bumping you down, but then when we got approved, it wasn't a pure thirty-three percent. It, the judge actually bumped it down less.
Like you mentioned, the, uh, like the insulin, the baby syringes, and the cover like the insulin pumps and supplies and those sensors.
If we find out they've been prospecting that, so it's anything in the chain of retail that they have been prospecting. Right now, we know for certain they've prosecuted insulin. We know for certain that they prospect the generic drugs. We think they have syringes. So, as discovery opens up, we might have to amend the complaint. You have to remember, we amended your opioid complaint about ten times. So, we might have to amend it just to in regard to the pumps or anything else that we find that would have raised the cost of health insurance.
I guess the only other issue is if you just keep us updated, if we choose to do this.
Absolutely, and, um.
If it gets followed, the first one, we just, we're told that one's what we're going to get.
Okay. Uh, we have an open line of communication. Miss Sales has my email, and you all can email me directly too, if you feel free. It's up to you. If you have any questions, just reach out at any point in time.
Cindy, you got a question? Anybody else got a question? So, for future voting, just want everybody to be satisfied with what we're going to be voting.
I guess in general, I don't know enough about how this thing works, but, you know, price fixing is subjective, I guess, sometimes? Depends? So, if, if you can sue them, and they can't make money, will they, our prices go up? I mean, again, this is pretty complicated, and the next time we have to have insurance, is it going to be higher?
You know, you're asking me to look into the future, and I don't know that. At the rate everything's going right now, everything's going to be higher. Actually, I'm listening to the lady before we talk about the cost of housing and inflation. Um, technically, they're not supposed to do that, but, you know, the doc-
It's a lot of price fix.
It is absolutely, it's a big, it's a lot of price fix.
That's what I need to, that's what I need to-
Yes.
How much most?
All right, no more questions, no restrictions. All right, this will take you down.
Thank you. And if you don't care, I'll, I'll probably head out after the vote, so thank you all.
You're welcome. Got a motion against you? Second by Robbie. Here's my, make the motion, check for Robbie. I wrote it.
Greg Nivens?
Yes.
Darwin Clark?
Yes.
Gil McCowen?
Yes.
Sidney Robbins?
Yes.
Donna Savage?
Yes.
Shane Walker?
Yes.
Robbie Melton?
Yes.
Jeff Long?
Yes.
Patrick McCurdy?
Yes.
Lee Richards?
Yes.
Philip Tally?
Yes.
Jordan Walker?
Yes.
James Bowman?
Yes.
Roger Carr?
Yes.
Randall Boswell?
Yes.
All four of you, carry. I guess this will go to work.
Quick second there.
Robbie.
Robbie, yeah, Robbie. Number fifteen, consider approval for award of bid for a fourteen million dollar general obligation, school bond series twenty twenty-four to Robert W. Deverde Company, with a, with a true interest cost of three point seven percent. Y'all know what what's the reason, but we can build a license up on some of the schools. We just upraised the score. I've got a motion by Philip. Second by Cindy. Can you discuss it further? Call Rob.
Randall Boswell?
Yes.
Roger Carr?
Yes.
Jesse Bowman?
Yes.
Jordan Walker?
Yes.
Philip Tally?
Yes.
Lee Richards?
Yes.
Patrick McCurdy?
Yes.
Jeff Long?
Yes.
Bobby Melton?
Yes.
Shane Walker?
Yes.
Donna Savage?
Yes.
Sidney Robbins?
Yes.
Gil McCowen?
Yes.
Darwin Clark?
Yes.
Greg Nivens?
All four of them, carry. Sixteen, consider approval for the amateur service supply for a grant for turnout gear, equipment or extra gear if you want to library on that.
Just trying to get some education here. Just stuff that we don't have, just brought up there. Just a bunch of material to get.
Any questions?
Make a motion.
Make a motion by Randall Boswell. Got a second by Roger Carr. Call Rob.
Greg Nivens?
Yes.
Darwin Clark?
Yes.
Gil McCowen?
Yes.
Sidney Robbins?
Yes.
Donna Savage?
Yes.
Shane Walker?
Yes.
Bobby Melton?
Yes.
Jeff Long?
Yes.
Patrick McCurdy?
Yes.
Lee Richards?
Yes.
Philip Tally?
Yes.
Jordan Walker?
Yes.
James Bowman?
Yes.
Roger Carr?
Yes.
Randall Boswell?
Yes.
All four of them, carry. Number seventeen, consider approval for two roads to be decreased in feet. Berryfield Road decreased by seven, seventy-two feet. Uh, Phillips Lane decreased by sixteen hundred fifty feet. And this has been ran through the planning commission. The landowners both, both, both sides of the road, and they wanted to, to have some more private roads to walk to the cross. That's reduced, or reduced. They're both on the mountain. They're, they're side to side now. Berryfield and Phillips Lane, cut there on four sixty-four. Got a motion by Donna Savage. Second by Jeff Long. Any questions or any concerns? Not, call Rob, please.
Greg Nivens?
Yes.
Darwin Clark?
Yes.
Gil McCowen?
Yes.
Sidney Robbins?
Yes.
Donna Savage?
Yes.
Shane Walker?
Yes.
Bobby Melton?
Yes.
Jeff Long?
Yes.
Patrick McCurdy?
Yes.
Lee Richards?
Yes.
Philip Tally?
Yes.
Jordan Walker?
Yes.
Jesse Bowman?
No.
Roger Carr?
Yes.
Randall Boswell?
Yes.
Fourteen, four, one. Motion carries. Number eighteen, consider approval for Andrew Clark. Cynthia Paul, Kelly Jacko, Brandon Reagan, Chantel Coleman, Rebecca Clayton, Dustin Collins, Mound Stafford, Robert Burn. Get a motion. I'm going to make a motion for Robbie Melton, got a second for Geraldine. Uh, we're going to signify by voice, all four?
Yes.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Number nineteen. Judith Cutright, uh, Jacob, go out to the library. Judith, are you here? There you are. I didn't see you out there. Come on up.
Good evening. I will make this short, uh, so we can all get out of this weather. I just wanted to let you know, uh, we have been notified, uh, back during the summer. We had applied for a grant for, uh, virtual, uh, job training. We have been approved, and Terry and I are set to go to the training at MTSU on March eleventh. We will get the equipment shortly after that, and then I will get with Shannon, and we will start, uh, having that available at the library for everyone. We also have a statue in. Uh, I don't know how many of you are aware, but we are replacing the fountain that's out there that hasn't worked in many, many years, uh, with a statue. As soon as the highway department has a moment to get us some rock, that will be filled in. And Tracy and I will, uh, Tracy Pennington will place a statue in there, and we will let you know so that y'all are welcome to come to the Grand River Hill.
Yeah, we're ready, because whenever Tyson gets to it, Collins will stop right there.
All right, sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Number twenty, uh, Comet, Robert Halfaker, the resident, the resident of Soulland, come up, Robert.
Thank you. Who, who's second?
They have just updated.
Just updated. I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
We're going to meet with you all right here.
Sir?
Uh, Robert.
Thank you.
Appreciate everyone's time and the opportunity to be here with you all. Uh, got you all a little pampered here. Um, I think I'm a better typer than a speaker, so, uh, let this kind of speak for itself. But, uh, wanted to, uh, so, uh, my name's Robert Halfaker. Uh, currently serving as the district conservators, uh, with the Natural Resource Conservation Service uh, here for Overton County, uh, Putnam County also. Um, predecessor, I think a lot of you all know Mr. Daryl Beeson. Uh, told my wife, I said, you know, when, when they named that day Daryl Beeson Day for Overton County, those were kind of big issues to fill. And, uh, so, um, knew, have known Daryl for years. Uh, was his counterpart, worked at Smith County for about ten years before coming here. Um, got to know him as a customer of farmer there in Putnam County, so was a customer of his. Uh, just very thankful for, uh, kind of the guidance that he's given and, and kind of the, the presence that he sat here, uh, in Overton and Putnam Counties and, and the work that has been done. So, uh, kind of wanted to give you all just a little brief overview of kind of who we are, uh, how we're structured, uh, and what it is that we do. So, um, again, you all, I'm, I'm certainly not going to read this thing to you, but, uh, kind of goes into explaining how the district was formed, when it was formed. Um, some of the efforts that are made, some of the work that we do. Um, talks about the education and outreach opportunities, um, some of the programs there that the district administers, as far as the equipment, uh, that the district has, has utilized and leveraged grant opportunities to secure the funds for those, uh, for those pieces of equipment. Um, the rental fees, uh, that are assessed for those. Unfortunately, that is used for local scholarships, ag scholarships that are administered through the district each year. Geofabric sales, uh, again, same thing. We have, um, a pretty well attended banquet each year. Uh, that's always advertised and, and open to the public to attend, so. Um, something that, there's a lot of hard work that goes into, something that I would, I would, I'm not going to ask for a show of hands, but I'm, I'm relatively certain, any, any time that I go and speak in front of a group of people, more than one or two, there's oftentimes at least somebody that has no idea who in the heck we are or what we do. And, uh, so wanted to definitely take this opportunity again to introduce myself, answer any questions that you all may have. Wanted to kind of summarize a couple of different things here. Y'all see some, um, some kind of summary of some funding that was brought into the county year here in two thousand and twenty-three. Uh, I came on in this position, uh, September the twelfth of twenty-two. So, uh, apologize for not, uh, not coming and greeting you all sooner, but I appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight. So, um, portion of these funds are state-funded, Tennessee Department of Agriculture. Uh, that ARCF, it kind of comes out of the same pot of money that the ag enhancement program, a lot of you all are probably familiar with that program. Uh, kind of same pot of money, but a different subpool, if you will. Um, that money's, that money's administered through, uh, the local soil and water conservation district board. Um, that's a five-member board. Two of those members are appointed, three of those are elected. Uh, the appointed positions are appointed by the state soil technical committee. Um, so they will each serve a free year term. Kind of year one, um, one of the appointed positions would, would come off, then the following year, the other appointed, and then the following, the three elected. Right, so we never have five branded board members at the same time. Um, board members, you all see them listed there. Uh, Mr. Stanley Carter Jr. is our chairman. Uh, Ms. Diana Church just recently, uh, stepped off her, uh, we tried to come up with it. I want to say it was, uh, we know it was more than seventeen years of service. And, uh, so, uh, we're certainly going to miss her and her service there. Um, but Ms. Wanda Lowe is our secretary of treasurer, uh, and then our members, uh, Mr. Travis Johnson and Kelly Paul. Uh, you all see the staff listed there. Um, there's a reason that the soil and water conservation district staff is listed first. Um, without the support of the county and, uh, the work that, that you all do and, and that you all are gracious enough to allow us to operate, none of this money comes in. Um, we are set up in a partnership to where myself, uh, within RCS, basically without the support of the district, um, we couldn't be here and operate in the way that we do. So, um, it's vitally important that, uh, that we have your continued support. Uh, we very much appreciate that. Mr. Twala White and Mr. Travis Sales, um, are the two employees that, uh, that you all sponsor for us to work with. Um, as far as, you know, kind of, I kind of like numbers. Um, that's one of the, I guess, main, uh, points in which I'm judged against my counterparts, right? Uh, I tell everybody, you know, a, a big part of my job is to try to bring in our unfair share of the money that's available into the counties that I serve. So, um, you know, I'm, I'm certainly proud of the nearly one point five million that we brought in in two thousand and twenty-three. Um, but you all see the number of applications that we processed, right? We've got a long road to go, um, to get all of our applications funded. So that's something that we strive to do. Um, we treat everybody's walks in the door fairly, um, try to get, uh, as much money as we can for the projects that they want to do, when they want to do it. Uh, we realize that as a government, it, it oftentimes it's not as fast as we all want it to be, but, um, very grateful for the opportunity to be here. Um, kind of wanted to talk about a couple of the practices, right? So what do we do, right? It's dollars. Dollars don't mean a whole lot unless you get them, you can't get them on the ground. So last year, two thousand and twenty-three, what we paid on, um, was a little over forty-six thousand feet of fence. Uh, you all can probably look at me and tell that I didn't walk every one of them feet last year, but, uh, um, that's for, uh, interior fence, for rotational grazing, and exclusion fence to protect sensitive areas, exclude livestock from streams, ponds, woodlands, that sort of thing. Um, so if we fence animals out of a sensitive area, um, we'd have to provide them water, right? We realize, uh, a cow or a sheep or a goat come different than you're out, right? They got to have something to drink, so. Uh, developing alternate water systems, um, put on, uh, a little over ninety-eight hundred feet of pipeline, eleven watering facilities, um, these were all livestock-based systems that were implemented and paid on in two thousand and twenty-three. Um, eleven hundred and forty-nine acres of cover crops on highly erable land. Um, so protecting, conserving the soil. Um, sick holes, right? That's been a, a, a very popular practice since my time here. A lot of you all, uh, no doubt have, you know, have, have issues with sick holes or, or come in contact with your constituents that do. Um, we completed six sick hole treatments in two thousand and twenty-three. Um, we think about the erosivity of the soils, um, within the gout, right? So, um, a lot of times we're fixing that with rock. Um, so grade stabilization structures, rock line waterway. Um, completed seven grade stage structures, uh, eleven hundred and sixty-nine feet of rock line waterway, and forty-three and a half acres of forest sand improvement. So, again, that's a lot of numbers, um, and some practices, some things that, you know, uh, undoubtedly, you know, the, the general public may not realize the resource that's there. Um, you know, again, we, we fail to fund all of the applications that we have. It's been that way for a number of years. It's been that way in each county that I've worked previous to here. Um, so as far as, you know, to try to beat the bushes, if you will, to, to try to, to gain more participation, I, I often kind of struggle with, you know, I, I don't have the answer that I want to give to about two-thirds of the people that come through the door as it is. You know, we're not able to secure that money, so. Uh, went on to explain there a little bit about how the programs are administered, right, that state program, um, much like ag enhancement, right? It's first come, first served, right? There's an application date, and, and applications are submitted, they're processed, uh, first come, first served. The federal programs that equip, we have an acronym for everything. Um, equip, CSP, um, those are all evaluated based on their environmental benefit. So, um, I tell folks, if, you know, my job is to point out, um, any opportunities that I find when I'm working with you on your farm, um, to make environmental benefits, but we don't ask for the money for anything that the participant didn't agree to. So, um, that's just a little bit of kind of how that works. Um, again, just wanted to take an opportunity to meet all of you all. Um, our office is located there on the back patio. City address, phone number, uh, feel free to give us a call, just questions. Uh, you all are, are a very diverse group of folks that come in contact with a lot of people that, um, that I'll probably not meet unless you all know that maybe there's a resource, you know, to, to give to them, so. Um, we've got plenty of copies of that. Uh, uh, our board meetings are the second Tuesday of each month at five P.M. Eric's office. We welcome you all to attend. Uh, we're under the same sunshine laws as your meetings here, so, um, open to the public. We welcome, um, any visitors for that, any questions that you all have tonight, or, uh, or in the future, I'd be happy to try to answer those.
Any questions or?
Do you do a lot of renting equipment?
So, um, Ms. Twala and Travis are, are certainly the heavy lifters, if you will, on the, on the equipment. Um, Travis, uh, a part of his, uh, um, job description is, is maintenance on the equipment, so, uh, he keeps a tally of, you know, as things break, which we all know around equipment, make a break. Um, so services that. Uh, and then Ms. Twala keeps the books on, um, as far as what piece is used. Um, you know, how many acres for the grille, how many, uh, days for the lime spreader. Of course, the geotextile is either in feed or in rolls. Um, so, yeah, they, they, uh, they do the, the work there to kind of keep hands on that, if you will. Um, one of the things that kind of always gets lost in the shuffle is, right, it's one of the smallest paragraphs on there, and I, I realized that when I put this together, but conservation and education. So some of those events that, uh, that these folks and, and that I've been able to participate in as well, um, and some familiar faces with some of you all that I've seen there, but, um, definitely Progressive Ag Safety Day, um, they are the coordinators for that event. Um, that's a huge event, y'all. I don't, I've never seen an event that well-run. When you get little ones like that, you know, and it's kind of a herd and gap. Um, so, uh, definitely hats off to them. A few other, of the events, um, the poster contest is something that the district, um, administers down from the Tennessee Association of Conservation Districts. Um, they'll have a, uh, category, right? So, uh, we work with the schools, um, third grade, uh, level students, uh, can submit a poster. Uh, the district, um, gives cash prizes for, um, the winners of those. Um, and then those are normally go on to compete in the state contests, that sort of stuff. Uh, the Envirofund Contest, high school age students. Um, we partner and work with, uh, I'm in a classroom, I was literacy week. Um, the career day, um, something that, like I said, I know myself or some of the staff here is, uh, has participated in these events just in the time that I've been here, so. Um, and the scholarship, again, a portion of those grille rental fees, um, go to the funding of that five hundred dollar annual scholarship, so. Again, that's, uh, just in a nutshell, um, with a, with a poor public speaker to explain a little bit about what we do and how we work. Um, but again, I know you all, uh, have a pretty full agenda and a lot to do, so, uh, I appreciate your time.
About a minute, your second few, you reach out at five P.M. to throw.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Again, phone number's there, um, y'all, please feel free to reach out, um, if you want to know more about it. Um, if we can assist any of you all personally, anyway, you know, or any of the constituents that, uh, that are in your areas, uh, you know, agriculture is number one industry in the state of Tennessee, so. Uh, we know about, uh, uh, the rise in prices, right? These materials and things have certainly not gone up down in the last few years. Um, to leave you with this, um, I've heard it all my career that these cost share funds turn over seven times in the community. Um, you think about if we're able to award Joe Farmer with contract, um, he's probably going to buy some materials locally, I hire a local contractor, um, somebody that works at that local co-op or, or that local contractor, um, they're probably going to go to Casa and have dinner, um, right? They're going to, you know, buy the groceries here. Um, so there's a number of times and ways in which this funding turns over, uh, in the community, so. Uh, something that, you know, I'm very passionate about, something that I'm proud to be a part of, and, uh, something that I hope to see be a continued success here in Overton County. Thank you.
Alright, next item on our agenda is Chad's counsel, the captain of the state.
I have this to field, things I want to update y'all on. I did want to say that I'm really excited about what Judith just had to say about the library. She's been working on both of those things for quite a while. So I'm glad to be able to help her with the virtual job training and getting people out to try that. I think that's just going to be awesome. It will be awesome. And then being able to switch that, put the statue up, it's going to really help out them too, and just make that area a little bit more inviting, so that was good news.
Who's the statue of?
Well, I don't think she wants to run it out of this yet.
You gotta be there for the review.
Yeah, be there for the review. It'll be really nice. I think everybody will really like it. I was just asking about the library. I got out of my lane and started talking about the mother chef. I did want to let y'all know that we had utilized our resources through the American Job Centers that serve the upper Cumberland area, and they have assigned a person to come up and help us at the chamber. She serves as our administrative assistant. She will more than likely be there through fall. If the hours work out the way we planned, maybe a little bit longer. She is working full-time. She is absolutely amazing, and the last three weeks of having her there have been terrific. And so just just to let you know kind of how that works, they they pay her to work for us, do a workforce grant that the state gives to the American Job Centers. And the people that come in and do the work, they have to qualify for this program. It allows them to get more work experience and things like that. So definitely happy to have her there. Her name's Tanya. If y'all want to come on and meet her, she's there every day, right? Don't forget, she'd love to meet y'all as well. Also, we have, we've been fortunate enough to get an intern from T T U who will be there the entire semester. He is a senior at Tech, majoring in political science, and he's here, just wave your hand, Brian. This is Brian Lawhead. He'll be at the chamber with us for the rest of the semester, probably through May, right? Through May? Okay, awesome. He's been a great help as well. He's helping us do some grant writing and and things, so.
He's very polite.
He really is.
He is very polite.
And I I mean, you know, most, most people his age, they don't come to you and ask what they can do to help. They just sit back and wait for you to tell them. Not, not Brian. He he's up there, and he's asking all the time. He keeps himself busy every day, so definitely happy to have him in the chamber as well. So who's who's on the property committee?
Property committee.
Somebody told me I have to take something before the property committee.
Howling County property?
Like the county property?
Yeah, Howling County property.
Oh, okay. Alright. So I just wanted to, I'm talking to you guys directly, because I'm going to bring something to y'all before the next commission meeting. We have come across a grant that we can apply for at the chamber to help beautify the property around the museum. And more specifically down by the creek. And maybe, I wasn't even going to go this far, but I'll go ahead and tell you just a little bit, maybe try to figure out a way to clean it up down there, make a nice little area for people to come and maybe eat lunch, and maybe even have a swing set, some small things with some lighting, mulch, nothing too fancy, but just something to create just a little bit of draw to the museum. And, you know, help just just maybe maybe get a different bunch of people there at the museum.
It's drilled up.
Yeah, it looks pretty rough, and it's probably going to take a little bit of work, and this is a very competitive grant, but may as well give it a shot and see. They award anywhere from five hundred to fifty thousand for certain projects depending on the need. So we will be bringing that to the property committee before the next meeting, see if we can't get that approved, and then I'll be back to talk to y'all about it more next, uh, next time. Yes, I'm sorry. I meant to mention that. I had talked to Paula about it, and she's she's getting, she thinks it would be awesome to have that down there. And this might evolve a little bit while me and Brian are kind of working through it. He's helping me with the grant writing. And it might evolve into something a little bit different between now and then. We've we've just got to get into it just a little bit more to see what it's going to take. And lastly, we've got two events this week that are coming up. We have a ribbon cutting tomorrow at ten A M. over at Daisy Mae's, my wife lost my train of thought. Daisy Mae's Boutique, that ten, it's one-on-one South Court Square. It's there on the corner. And then on Wednesday, February fourteenth, Crawford Family Power Practice is having a ribbon tying event. And I'll just be honest, I've never heard it called a ribbon tying event before, and I did some research. And it's a little bit different than a ribbon cutting, so I figured I would just go let y'all know what that means, because it was news to me, and I like it. But if you've already opened a business and you've had your ribbon cutting, but you want to signify that they're permitted to your community or someone new is coming into the business that wants to meet the community, it's called a ribbon time event. So that is what they're going to do, because they want to signify their commitment to our community and also introduce our new doctor, Nick Celeste. I think that's how you pronounce his name. And that's all. That's at noon. I'm sorry, I didn't say a time. That's at noon on Wednesday.
Where'd you say that?
It's at Crawford Family Power Practice, a Royal Medical Drive-In Hospital, and that's at noon. So I'm looking lovely all kinds of things, and that's all I have. Any questions?
Thank you, Cindy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, I'm going to move number twenty-two down to the last, and we'll get down to the business. Turnover page, just checking third page, number twenty-five. Approved basically, number twenty, twenty-four, back zero two, one, two, back zero three. I had two judicial commissions, I think. Billy Ann's drafted paperwork for that, and we've only got one right now that we're working on today, so we need to try to get these two people on. So is there any questions from anybody about the judicial commission? Judicial commission is where we know about the, what the night work for, or the rest of them. Entertaining a motion, someone, got a motion by Jeff Long, got a second by Philip Tally. Kirkley, call her up.
Randall Boswell.
Yes.
Roger Carr.
Yes.
Jesse Bowman.
Yes.
Jordan Walker.
Yes.
Philip Tally.
Yes.
Lee Richards.
Yes.
Patrick McCurdy.
Yes.
Jeff Long.
Yes.
Bobby Melton.
Yes.
Shane Walker.
Yes.
Donna Savage.
Yes.
Sidney Robbins.
Yes.
Gil McCowen.
Yes.
Darwin Clark.
Yes.
Greg Hibbins.
Yes.
All four of them should carry. Number twenty-six, acknowledge receipt of report on debt obligation for the school bond series twenty twenty-four. Everybody else looked at. Any questions about it? Got a motion by Philip. Second by Donna Savage. All four. Any opposed? Motion carries. Alright, number black twenty-two, any comments from the the General Folks United South of Young? If you do have any comments, that's to be related to what we talked about tonight on the agenda. If you have any business that you want to do before the county court, we've got a form that you can fill out and get back to the county executive's office. He'll get you put on the agenda for next month. So does anybody have any questions about what we talked about tonight on our agenda? Alright, announcement, there's going to be, they've had a budget committee meeting, they added another one for March the fourth at five thirty, so all the budgets will be, and put that in your phone, the calendar. There'll be a budget meeting on March the fourth at five thirty. Does anybody have anything else that's going to be quoted? Appreciate y'all being here. It's less longer than we normally do, but I think we've got a lot of stuff done. So all entertaining motions for adjournments, got a motion, say you're up, got a second, so we'll establish. All four.
No.
Any opposed? We're adjourned. Thank you, everybody.